Good evening. The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community Schools Board of Education is now brought to order on Monday, November 7th, 2016 at 7 o'clock PM. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to welcome everyone. Your attendance this evening reflects an interest in local education and is greatly appreciated. At this time, we have three students from Elliott Elementary School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would Jalen, Hayden, and Kendra please come forward? And we're going to go into 165.17, Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, students. I'm going to read your biographies now. All right, Kendra, you're first. "I am nine years old and in Mrs. Golden's 4th grade class. What I like about Elliott School is that we added in the seven habits because they make me a better person. I am way nicer now." Wow. "I am learning math because it is easy for me. When I grow up, I would like to be a hip-hop dancer. Right now, I play volleyball. My favorite book is Anything Scary, and my favorite color is blue." And Jalen Johnson. "I am nine years old and in Mrs. Buter's 4th grade class." Did I pronounce that right? "What I like about school best is learning about social studies and where the continents are located. In my free time, I like to play with my action figures. I like going to my church where I like to sing in the choir. When I grow up, I would like to be a WWE wrestler." Wow. And Hayden Lutz. Did I pronounce that right? Lutz. "Hello, my name is Hayden Lutz. I am nine years old and in Mrs. Forsyte's 4th grade class. My favorite subject is math. I like to play football with my brothers. I also like building with Legos and collecting rocks. I would like to be a geologist when I grow up." Wow. Lofty ambitions. We've got a geologist, a WWE wrestler, and a hip-hop dancer.
All right.
Awesome.
That is great. All right, now, Board Trustee Ms. Hines is coming to share with you right now.
Hello. I would like to thank Kendra McCarty, Jalen Johnson, and Hayden Lutz. Thank you for starting the Pledge of Allegiance today for the Board of Education, and I would like to give you guys certificates. But first, I would like to know your family. Can you show us who your family is today, who you brought today to the meeting? Awesome. And Kendra, who did you bring today to the meeting?
I brought my dad and my friend Alex.
And Hayden, who did you bring to the meeting today?
My little brother Ethan, my mom, my dad, and Eric.
Awesome. And is the principal here? Is your principal here today? Your principal? Where's your principal? Oh, thank you for coming. So here's your award, and they will take a picture for you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you. So at this time, if the parents of the young people in the front, if you want to leave, you're more than welcome to leave, but you're more than welcome to stay too, because we love having you here in the audience, but I understand that. Well, no, you guys don't have school tomorrow, do you? Oh, you can stay all night. That's okay, scratch that. But if you do, if you want to leave, you're more than welcome to. Moving on to item number 166.17, roll call in attendance, Dr. Weaver.
Mr. Griffin.
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo.
Present.
I am present, Ms. Hines.
Present.
Ms. Madison.
She's excused.
Ms. Madell.
I'm here.
Ms. Walker.
Present.
Let the record reflect that six out of the seven of us are in attendance.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Moving on to item number 167.17, presentation, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Madam President, members of Board of Education, Dr. Harmel, members of the audience. Periodically, we come before the Board with update on school improvement. Tonight, we have Hicks Elementary School, so General Mullins, our Executive Director of School Improvement and K4 Education, along with Principal from Hicks, Amy G., and staff members are going to take and provide a presentation for you.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to give a brief and quick update on where we are district-wide, as well as individual buildings in the school improvement process, and then I'll turn it over to Hicks and their staff. We are currently waiting for Advanced Ed to release the new documents for the 16-17 school year, which we will use to plan for the 17-18 school year. We were hoping that they would be released late fall. The newest information they have given to us is that early December we'll have those documents, but that's really not a bad thing. It's giving our new administrators and our buildings time to spend on their 16-17 goals and plans that they spent a long time creating. So it's giving them the freedom to just, to be in the moment, to be in the school year, and work on those goals and plans. Other conversations and planning that are taking place are regarding the internal review process that we've talked about previously, and to plan for what that will look like in terms of central offices' role, building admin's role, teachers' role, as well as parents and students in that process. Right now, we're looking at monthly and bimonthly tasks that we will use, and principals and their staffs will be able to plan for, and will be able to use that as a document when we go in and support buildings in walkthroughs and internal reviews. Just this week, on Thursday, we'll have our first District Improvement Team meeting, in which I will introduce myself to that team and work with that team, and our big charge for the first meeting will be to look at the District School Improvement Plan, look at the goals, look at how the strategies and activities impact the goals, and really understand what that means and how we'll support the buildings in driving them forward using those goals and plans. So that's where I stand in my planning work for this year, and I'd like to introduce and give the floor to Ms. Amy G. to go over some great things that are going on at Hicks, and she's brought several staff members to share that information with you.
Thank you. Good evening. We are super excited to be here. Anytime that we have the opportunity to talk about the wonderful things that are going on at our building, we would absolutely take the opportunity to do so. So thank you, first and foremost, for inviting us over here this evening. We're excited to be here. I am not going to do most of the talking. My name is Amy G. I am the principal over at Hicks, for those of you that do not know me. We are doing some awesome, awesome things. I just wanted to point out really quickly at our title of the presentation tonight, yes, it is, we're going to talk about the instructional learning cycle, but I think it's most important to reference the fact that it says Hicks hustles harder. Hicks has always hustled, but notice the ER on the word "hard." We are hustling a little harder, and we're going quickly, and we have some amazing staff members at Hicks that have completely bought into the new way that we are going to embrace the learning cycles that we're doing, but I could stand before you and talk about it, but really, it means a lot more to hear it from the staff members that are in it live every single day with our Hicks children. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Bartolata. She is, I would like to introduce, actually, all of them. This is Kathy Bartolata. She's a 2nd grade teacher at Hicks Elementary. This is Eileen Jacobs. She teaches 1st grade. We have Libby Dunlap. She's a 4th grade teacher. Brad Smith, 4th grade teacher. And Matt Furka. He teaches a 1-2, 1st and 2nd grade split. Okay? Oh, notice, we're the Hicks Hornets, so notice the honeycomb and the total elementary, right?
Okay. What an ILC stands for is it's an instructional learning cycle, and what we've done at Hicks is we work on a new subject every week between the subjects of math, reading, writing, and behavior. The old way that we did our cycles, we would achieve nine deficit areas before it came time for the M-step. The new way that we're doing it now, we're actually hitting 28 deficit areas. So based on our data, we can pinpoint and focus on specific skills to strengthen the students' areas of weakness. So basically, the differentiation for each child is done for us, driven by the data, and so therefore, we're working smarter, not harder, and we're hitting more targets.
All right. So the next slide that you're going to see is the calendar that was developed. So it's kind of small, but if you look at it, it kind of, it says what we're supposed to do each week. So the first one, the top, says that it is the reading post-test. So the pretest was given in November, so the post-test will be given on skills that we have been teaching for the past three weeks. So the post-test will be given that first week, along with the pretest for behavior. So we're essentially giving two pretests and a post-test every week. And then, on our weekly meetings, our PLCs are on Tuesday, is our time to plan. So we come to the meetings with our data, either our post-assessment behavior, or, I'm sorry, our post-assessment data, or our pre-assessment data. And so Ms. G. lined it out for us, and then we created a calendar so that we could keep it all straight. So Lenny's going to come up next and explain a little bit more about it.
Yes. So the ILC stands for an instructional learning cycle, and the way the cycle works is no matter what subject you're working on, the team members come together, whether it's kindergarten for 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and you target one area that you identify as a high-needs area. Usually, it's aligned with our curriculum, and you develop a pretest that you give to all the students in the class across the grade level, and then, once you administer that pretest, you group the students based on their proficiency, ranging from far from proficient to mastery, and you'll kind of get to see that a little more with the next slide. But once you group those students, then you get to sit down and really talk about how you're going to target each group of students based on where they're at on that pretest. So the students who need a lot of help, who need a lot of support, will be immediately identified, and the students who are already proficient will be identified. And so you come up with a plan to address each student where they are in each target area. Yeah, so, and then, when you post-assess three weeks later, then you can see where those exact same students have moved over the course of your three-week cycle, and it's all kind of laid out for you. So then you can kind of identify the effective strategies that you used as a team and continue planning based on your results.
And the goal is, on our, you'll see the rainbow chart coming up. So there's blue, green, yellow, and red. So the idea with the three-week cycle is if you have the kids in red, you would like them to move up. So our goal is to move them up, obviously, as long as they're making progress. That's what we're looking for. So the goal is to move them continuously up.
And we house all of our data and our plans to address each student's deficit areas in binders that are housed in the front office, and they're available for Ms. G. to check in on. We can kind of see what other teams are working on. Our pair pros and intervention staff can see what we're working on, and anyone who comes into the school, whether it be from central office or from the state or the county, they can come in and they can see our cycles and how they're working. So then, when they come into our classrooms, they can see those same areas as they're embedded into our lesson plans. So this is the rainbow chart. So when we administer the pretest, it's kind of hard to see because it's small, but each kind of color on the chart represents a level of proficiency. Students in the red are at 68% or lower based on their pretest scores. The next level up is, I believe, 70% to 82%. They are kind of the bubble students, particular, right on the cusp of proficiency but not quite there. So the students, especially at the top end of that range, we would expect to be able to move into the green or blue. Students in the green are already proficient, so they've already shown some mastery of the skill but are still working toward that independence level. And then, students in the blue, our students we're not really concerned about with whatever target area we're focusing on, they've already shown that they are, they have mastered that concept. And so in our instruction, the students at the top end of the yellow spectrum and in the green would be those students that we would expect, especially if they make it to that level by the post-test. They should be on track to perform on, especially the M-step test, that we're always kind of looking ahead to get our students ready for.
To continue with the ILC process, grade-level teams decide on strategies and focal points, and they are embedded in the lesson plans, as you can see on the screen above, that focus on a class deficit. So grade levels, regardless, 1st grade, 2nd grade, 3rd grade, so on, will pick a specific area, deficit area, and we will collaborate and embed it into our lesson plans so we can focus on that area to get those kids where they need to be. It's really added focus placed on those students who fall in that red section of the rainbow chart. Also, to talk about our ILC process, the individual learning takes place during a three-week cycle through intervention, so trained individuals in a specific content area will pull those students out and work with them in that specific deficit area. Now, on the next slide that will appear, and you all have this sheet in front of you, is the Data Review Meeting template. It allows grade levels to collaborate, and it guides instruction, what we need to do, what data, looking at the data, what we need to do to basically get those students to where they need to be.
And lastly, after the three-week cycle is completed on that specific subject area, the same pretest is given as a post-test, and that allows us to see specific gains made by the student over the three-week cycle. We fill out a new rainbow chart at this time, so we can show, when we put the two charts together, how many students have moved from the red and yellow areas up into the blue and green areas, because we fully believe that in the blue and green areas, when they reach M-step time, that they have the ability to succeed on the M-step, when they maintain a blue and green area. The Data Review Meeting form, then, is placed in the binder, and once it's there, goes into the office, like Libby mentioned. That way, we're accountable. Administration can review it at any time. You're all welcome to review it, and then that specific cycle is completed, and we find a new deficit area to focus on.
Aren't they awesome? So just to sum it up at the end, obviously, Hicks hustles harder. I just wanted to put this little piece in here that we hope that all of you are just excited, as we are listening to the presentation today, knowing the fact that this is a school that has always had a process in place, and one that is working but just needed a little bit more oomph behind it. So that's the word "harder." They've always been hustling over at Hicks, but we just wanted to add a little bit extra onto it. So as far as the principal standpoint goes, I could not be prouder to be the principal at Hicks and have an awesome team with our children every single day to make sure that they are exposed to every content area as quickly as possible, but also with a purpose behind it, that it's served every day because they're doing the work. And knowing that this process helps them with their lesson planning is a win-win for everybody. So thank you. On behalf of our Hicks family for having us come in tonight, we appreciate you very much, and we hope you have a rest of your wonderful evening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do any of the trustees have any questions or want to say anything?
Oh, I just had a comment. I'd like to say that you guys are being very proactive, like with your seven habits, and I like how you guys, since you are a leader in me school with this program, put together, even like every three weeks, I like how you guys have strategy to bring the kids forward in groups. So I mean, I really applaud what you guys are doing. I'm pretty excited about this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right.
When you said that the skill was being embedded into the lessons, and that, are you talking cross-curricular or just in that content?
Got to talk from the mic because it gets recorded.
So the question was, when we have a specific area that we're targeting, does that go into, can you repeat that last part of your question?
Cross-curricular or are you just staying within the content?
So when a grade-level team meets, they'll figure out which is the area that they best need to focus on. So that post-test, or excuse me, pretest is developed based on where the students are right there then for that curricular area. So when, on the charts, you saw the reading, the writing, and the math, and behavior, they pull in which struggle they're at currently with their pacing guides of using the curriculum. Does that answer?
No.
Yeah, are you doing it across the curriculum? So if you've got a skill that may be a reading skill that you can also cover in the science or social studies?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, yes. So science and social, yes, I'm so sorry, yes. Science and social studies is never left out, so we always look to see what could work with our math skills and embed that within our science, and then also our reading within our social studies curriculum. Yes, I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Moving on to item B.
Okay. Thank you. Now, while our two teachers are going to the microphone, a little bit about this. On August 30th, we received an email string from Laurie Fodale from the city of Wayne that originated in an email string from a person named Marie Hocker of the Ford Motor Company's Government Stakeholders Relation Office in Dearborn. And they wanted to know if there were two teachers in our community that might want to apply for a scholarship and attend a National Dropout Prevention Conference promoted by Ford Motor Company. And so when I was asked to consider it, I thought of two teachers, and so I contacted them and asked them if they were involved. Would be interested in being involved in those two teachers are Josh Rich-Licky and Amanda Laylaw. Going to tell you a little bit about the two of them. Josh is a district director of curriculum at Jefferson Barnes Learning Lab. He's a computer science and English teacher at Franklin and Wayne Memorial High School. He's taught for 16 years, including previous classes in coding, JavaScript, Android apps. He holds a master's degree in instructional technology from Wayne State University and is also an avid technology enthusiast with experience in robotics, drones, video editing, sound production, application programming, and distance learning. Amanda Laylaw is a computer science teacher and has spent the last 12 years in Wayne Westland Community Schools, teaching AP Biology and AP Chemistry, Biology, Chemistry, and Computer Science. Amanda holds an education master's in policy planning and administration from Boston University and was recently awarded the title of biggest techie from the graduating seniors. She runs a personalized 21st century classroom where she has purposely banished all traditional student desks. I'm going to turn it over to them and let them tell you what they did at the Ford STEAM Lab, Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math, and the Teacher Hackathon.
Hi, I'm Amanda. This is Josh, and I think, I think I'll have Josh start out and tell about this STEAM Lab that we went to and this hackathon, and it was a very intense two days with a lot of very intense people.
And a third day.
And a third day.
So we didn't know what to expect. We got there, there were approximately 20 teachers there, and they just said, what can you do? What kind of app can you create to prevent dropouts? And their goal was to drop the, or have a decline in the dropout rate in half. So Amanda and I quickly got into a group with four of the smartest people I've ever met in my life, and we worked furiously for about 30 hours in between two- or three-hour naps. Didn't feel tired most of the time, just full of ideas, and the way it was presented was, you know, a series of scenarios in which we had to identify potential users, identify what their problems is, what the pain point is, what our value is in our app. And we developed the app over the course of two days, and then developed our presentation up until, what, about 2:00 AM the night before?
Yeah.
Then we had to present in front of about 250, 300 people at the Renaissance Center on a Tuesday morning at 7:00 AM. Our biggest challenge was actually-
With full live mics, by the way, at 7:00 AM?
Yes. Yes. Our biggest challenge was actually getting lost in the run sun. But once we found our place, we gave our presentation, and our app is Game Plan, and we were lucky enough to earn second place in the competition, and we won $3,000 for the school district.
Great.
And we only lost by three votes, so.
We're not bitter.
No.
It's okay. So this is our app. This is Game Plan. It's about helping students make their game plan and then following it. We started by focusing on our user and her pain points, and this is Kate. She's a coach, she's a mentor, she's a mom. She's very involved in the district that she grew up in. She's a volunteer coach. She's trying to volunteer at her kids' schools. She's very worried that kids are falling through the cracks, and she doesn't know how she can help build community and really keep everybody together and on the same page. So Katie needs a game plan. She needs a way of helping her students achieve goals, make connections, and build community.
So the reason why we pinpointed those three things are, the major dropout reasons are pretty simple. Kids who believe that they're too far behind to catch up, which is where we got achieving goals. Students who don't feel like they have enough connection or community within the school, so therefore, it's easy for them to walk away. So we wanted to make an app where it was important that you build up relationships based on positive feedback from the people in your school, kind of to build kids up and make it so that it's more difficult to leave that environment.
Purposeful bragging.
Yes. And that's what the eventual outcome was, were our brags.
I'm trying.
Oh, okay.
Oh, was it going to work?
I don't know.
Uh-oh.
We have a video.
Technology. There's a video here, let's see. Now, okay. If you were to go through this video, it shows a whole prototype that we actually developed within those 30 hours. We were using the STEAM Labs design engineering process, and we followed their sort of curriculum to go through. I have to take a minute to say that following this process of theirs was some of the most enticing curriculum I've been a part of as a learner in a very long time. Very rarely in the last 15 years have I wanted to stay up until 2:00 AM, trying to figure out a way to solve a problem. Most of my time ends up, yeah, we'll do that in the morning, it'll be good. So we can't show you this video here, but we'd be happy to send the link in the video to anybody else if you find us. You want to describe some of the pages on it?
Yeah, so the major focus of the app is that students have micro-goals set. These can take no longer than five days to achieve. You know, we have goal-setting programs and mentorship programs at Wayne and at Glenn, but some of the goals are too long-term. Kids lose sight of that, so what we decided was to use micro-goals. Maybe I want to figure out what translation is in geometry, and that's going to be my goal for the next five days. And when my teacher sees that I've mastered that, then my teacher brags about me. So on the screen there, you can kind of see that there's an athletic brag for a kid who made a good play on the football team. So we had academic areas, health areas, so that kids can work on better eating, exercise. We had a family category where parents can actually assign goals to their students and get positive brags. And then, we have an up-vote system, which in other words, other people can see that and say, I really like that, and then all that gets tracked on a leaderboard per school. So you see which kids are achieving goals and which kids are not achieving goals. So that's twofold. Number one, positive behavior intervention support is built right in, positive recognition. And then, when we see kids who aren't achieving their goals, that'll set up a red flag to say, hey, somebody needs to go connect with this kid. And there's a whole bunch of stuff built on the back end for that, to kick up those flags and identify mentor teachers that'll just stop in and say, hey, what's going on? The brags are the major point of the whole app, and really, we hope to build that community with the app.
Yes. I will tell you a little bit about the fantastic people we worked with. Cash Compton, that's his real name, for real.
Yeah.
Cash Compton. He's 22 and brilliant. Roland is 26 and brilliant. Haytham is, he wouldn't tell us, and very, very brilliant. And CW, he was actually from the Arkansas Board of Education. He was in charge of all of their alternative ed programs. He was kind of the head guy, and he was our data guru. So these four people were assigned to us to support us in our ideas, and we're very thankful.
And there's us.
And there's us. We were the teachers, but everything kind of stemmed from what we knew about our students and moved forward. Is there anything I can answer for you guys?
I kind of want to jump in here, so.
Okay.
They don't seem very excited, but when they found out that they won this award, they called my secretary and left the conference and drove straight to my office.
Oh, that's true.
That's how excited they were that they had won this. Now, I'm going to add just a little bit of a piece to it now, and this is very, very early stages, but the app developers have actually contacted them and want to make a commercial version of what they've developed. So this has turned out to be a pretty big thing, so.
That's good, yes. Anything from the trustees?
I think it's a fabulous plan, and I'm really glad that Wayne Westland, we're so heavy on curriculum, innovation, new things. This is awesome. So congratulations on that. This is awesome, so congratulations on the award.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Is this at four? So, for the upper high school and upper elementary or junior high?
We developed it six through 12, but it should be available for all if it were to work right. What do you think?
Well, a little bit.
Yeah.
I'm thinking goals, micro goals. I could see them.
Absolutely.
Or something like that.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Start early, hopefully stick with them for the rest of the 12 years or all 12 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 168.17, citizen comments, agenda items only. Dr. Weaver?
This is a place on our agenda where anyone here tonight may speak to the agenda items that are before us for this meeting. Please state your name before speaking. Seeing none, Madam President.
Moving on to item number 169.17, consent agenda. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Support by Dr. Weaver, supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
I vote yes, Mrs. Hines.
Yes.
Ms. Madison is absent. Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record reflect a 6-0 vote.
Thank you. Motion passes. Moving on to item number 170.17, review and approval of business services and finance items. Mr. Larson Schuyler, how are you today?
Great, how are you?
Good.
Thank you, Madam President. You have a memo in your agenda on page 15. I just sort of want to highlight that a little bit. Amanda, update the board on transportation, specifically our effort to continuously review student safety, timely and efficient operations. Throughout the start of the 16, 17 school year, administration staff and transportation department worked as a team, finding ways to improve. We need a lot of improvement start of the school year. We started the year operationally within our staffing and equipment abilities, meaning we were short-staffed and were short-equipped, so we staffed and routed to our capacity. We have been hiring and training staff, but it takes at least eight weeks from the time that a individual starts to the time they get behind a wheel. Usually, it takes more than eight weeks. So, operations are starting to normalize, but we're still short some drivers. Start of school year, highlight some improvements needed to operate safely and timely. Student drop-off and pickup areas at some of our schools are congested, creating backups. The congestion is a concern for student safety, with parents and buses using the same area to drop off and pick up students. We are in the process of changing where students are dropped off and picked up at some schools. Student drop-off at John Glenn High School is shared by parents and buses in the front part. To separate the cars from buses, we're going to move the buses to the east parking lot. Buses will enter, pull around the building, where they have designated areas to park and pick up and drop off students. Cars will continue to drop off and pick up in the front of the building. This will provide cars more efficient flow and to safely drop off and pick up students. Additionally, drop-off and pickup of students will provide for better student safety and more timely operations for schools after John Glenn High School. We're also looking at other areas, specifically Stevenson, Marshall, and Franklin to improve. Now, these are just some of the things that really came out at the start of the school year, where we found that runs after some of the buildings were delayed. And, you know, if you, I don't know if you've ever been at John Glenn, but you can see everybody's trying to use the front there. You know, staff got together with the building, you know, B&amp;G Transportation, and just determined that going all the way around the building, sort of like if you've ever been at Adams, they have a parking area and drop-off specifically for buses. It's very efficient. John Glenn will be the same system, where they pull around the building and then pull it to the east side of the parking lot, so.
Great, thank you.
And we're looking at this probably right after Thanksgiving break.
Good. Okay. Any questions or concerns from the trustees?
I have a question. Are we addressing the issue of parents dropping their kids off in the middle of Marquette and having them run across?
Yes. Well, that, a lot of that is going to, the flow will be much faster going through there, so you're not, parents shouldn't be backed up as much. I know that you have, you know, people heading east and west, and so, it's hard to get in and out. But with the buses not blocking all that and backing it up, I think it, it should move much better. So, we'll monitor it.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 171.17, review and approval of human resource items. Ms. Bowe?
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and our listening audience. Tonight, I have the pleasure of recommending for your approval the placement of Mr. Don Loomis to the position of Assistant Principal at John Glenn High School. Don is currently working as an Assistant Principal in the Battle Creek Public Schools. Prior to Battle Creek, Don served as the Dean of Students, the Dean of College Preparation, and was a music teacher for the Jalen Rose Leadership Academy. He was also a music teacher in the Pennyac Schools. Don holds a Bachelor's of Music from Oakland University, a Master of Science from Concordia University, and he also has a professional education certificate in music education and also history, and he also holds his K-12 School Administrator Certificate.
Thank you. This time, I'll take a motion.
Moved.
Support, move by Mrs. Meddell, supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Meddell?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
I vote yes, Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record reflect a 6-0 vote.
Thank you. Congratulations.
I have a little statement, so.
Okay.
All right. To the Board of Education, Superintendent, and the community, thank you for this opportunity to serve the students and staff of the Wayne Westland Community School District. I appreciate the hard work of all staff members who are engaged with creating the future of this school district and the communities contained within. It truly does take a village, to quote a popular phrase, "to motivate, inspire, shape, and mold students into the future leaders of tomorrow such as yourselves." I look forward to be part, being part of a team of educators who are creating a college-going culture that emphasizes higher-order thinking skills, teamwork, and respect. This team will build graduates who are rigorous, relevant, and ready for higher education. The trend lines for higher education are clear. Present graduates will need coursework past high school for the higher-paying careers that strengthen themselves and this community. We want the best for our graduates, a career that will enable them to take care of themselves and the people that they love. I know that there's no magic formula to creating these future leaders. It takes all of us, staff, parents, students, and the community, working together to make every interaction with our youth a moment to build them into their best selves. We do this by trying to be our best selves for them, to be the model for their present and future interactions, to be the model for their future selves who will be contributing members of our society. I am proud to be a part of the tradition of the John Glenn Rockets, to have our students shoot for the stars, to reach beyond their world into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loomis. And I just want to say, welcome to the Wayne Westland family. Moving on to item number 172.17, Head Start Monthly Report. Mrs. Meddell?
As you all received the financial report for this month of October, I also wanted to add to this a program update for you on Walker Winter. We're still in the process of, of trying to fill all the spaces. The last time I heard, there was one space still available. Environmental inspection has been completed, lead inspection has been completed, fire inspection, we don't need to do it since we are being housed in an elementary building. We got that covered from the school district. The licensing inspection was supposed to happen at any day, and I'm not sure if it has occurred yet in the interim from my meeting at the end of October. So, lunches will be prepared at Stottlemyre and will be transferred over to Walker Winter. That breakfast and snacks will be delivered weekly and prepared on-site. Breakfastes will be cold unless toasted. We're trying to make sure that we meet the federal guidelines as required for this program. And staff is in place, and they are excited. So, that's what's going on at Head Start at Walker Winter. I know at Stottlemyre, they just had their big boo-bash, which was very well-attended with all the little kids from the, from the program. They all combined together, because we have, what, four programs over at Stottlemyre, I think? So, they had a great time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Meddell. Moving on to item number 173.17, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Hamala?
Thank you, President Walker. Good evening, everybody. This evening, I'd like to share two things with the board and our listening audience. First, I'd like to provide a brief update on legislative issues that may be discussed and/or acted upon during the final weeks of our legislature's time this calendar year, most commonly known as lame duck. There are a number of good sources for staying up to date on legislative issues. One of them is your own Michigan Association of School Board's website. And the bills that I will be keeping a close eye on during this time include potential changes to MIPSers, which could close that system to all new hires, that's Senate Bill 102. Leave time, accrual, and release time for union activities, as noted in Senate Bill 279 and Senate Bill 280. Electric choice, which I've shared with you frequently, that actually could be dealt with as early as this week. Those are Senate Bills 437 and 438. Without the McGregor Amendment, potentially, choice would be eliminated, which would be about a $400,000 per year loss to our electrical savings in this district. Teacher and administrator professional development, as noted in House Bills 5156 through 5159. And essentially, what these bills do is shift the way professional development is counted from days to hours and requires some different amounts for probationary teachers than existing teachers. It defines some of the required content of professional development, and in addition to that, it defines the length of time in which professional development could be counted. So, for example, only 30 minutes or longer in length, only 45 minutes or longer in length. And then, on top of it, has a 5% of your total state aid penalty for failure to meet the state's requirements. And then, finally, the critical shortage bill, which would be a bill that would expand the retirees eligible to help out in subbing or in critical shortage area, that's House Bill 5806. There are many, many more, but these are hot-topic items that I'll watch closely. There are many other things that could pop up. It's always important for the community as well as our, our school board, our teachers and staff as well, to stay attuned to these things. It's a helpful part of the legislative process. Don't hesitate to let our legislators know how you feel about any of these bills, and certainly, if you have questions, don't hesitate to call. I'll be happy to share information with you as we learn it, and it moves fast, so sometimes it's coming at us one after the next. Second, tomorrow is Election Day, and our students are not in session tomorrow. Our staff will be participating in a variety of professional learning activities. And additionally, tomorrow is the day Wayne County residents will address the enhancement millage ballot proposal. The enhancement millage is a county-wide measure that, if approved by the majority of voters in Wayne County, would generate approximately $385 per pupil for each public school student in the county. Each public school district would determine its own use for those funds, and those funds could be used for operational or day-to-day purposes. Wayne Westland, if this were approved, intends to use those funds for continued and enhanced provision of our instructional programs, attraction and retention of staff through competitive wages, and to replace our aging bus fleet, which you heard a little bit about tonight. The millage question is placed near the end of the ballot, and again, getting out to vote is a critical part of our democratic process, and I encourage everyone to go out and exercise their right to vote. That's the end of my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Hamala.
You're welcome.
Moving on to item number 174.17, citizen comments, non-agenda items. Dr. Weaver?
This is a place on our agenda where anyone in our, in, in our room tonight may speak to any item they wish to concerning our school district. Yes, sir?
Excuse me, good evening. My name's Larry Arreguin, and I'm here on behalf of Congressman John Conyers. I'm very impressed what I've heard so far of, of what your team is doing here. I'm going to be assigned to work with your school district with respect to educational issues. If there's anything that I can do to assist in your endeavors, by all means, reach out. I'll, I'll leave a card with the superintendent, and if it's anything from visits to Washington, DC, that your students may have and would like to have a tour of U.S. Capitol, White House, what have you, we'll make sure that we try to do our best to achieve that. If there are issues with respect to engaging any of the federal agencies where your students are involved with projects, by all means, we'll try to do that as well. Anything else that you may have a desire or interest in.
Thank you, sir. Can I have the spelling of your name, your name and spelling again?
Sure. It's first name Larry. Last name is spelled A-R-R-E-G-U-I-N.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Do you have anyone else in the audience? Okay. Moving on to item number 175.17, review and recommendations. Board of Education, Ms. Hines?
Thank you all for coming to our meeting today. I was able to attend a dinner for the Norway Community Citizens Council of Westland, and our William D. Ford Construction Technology Program received an award. So, they have an awesome program. I was so impressed when I went last year when they actually built a house. You know, I'm like, wow, these high school students are building a house. I found out some of those kids are getting jobs making over $100,000. So, this is a very good program. So, I'd like to congratulate them on that, and this has been a very successful school year. Like I said again, with the curriculum, I am so impressed by our school district. We are top of the notch district, and I brag everywhere I go about our kids. We have a great education here. And I'd like to thank the staff and the board and everyone who's been helping us get our kids to where we need to be to make them successful in life.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, thank you. As always, Kendra, Jalen, and Hayden did a great job. Thank you to Mrs. Griffin for bringing, bringing those students to us from Elliott. Amanda and Josh, and the award that they brought and the prestige that they bring to our, our school district. It seems like there's hardly a month that goes by that we aren't recognizing one of our staff as having done something exceptional, and makes me quite proud to be a part of this organization. Mr. Loomis, you had a, a nice list of things that need to be accomplished, and, and I wish you luck on those things. Keep in view the fact that you're working with some great kids. They're a lot of fun, and I hope you enjoy being around them, because that's really what the job's all about. I noticed the clock on the wall is, is saying it's almost 9:00. It's not as late as you think. But about 24 hours from now, our election is pretty much going to be in the books. It's a privilege, a right, if not a duty, for all of us to get out and vote. The bad thing about democracy is we deserve what we get. So, make sure that you make your thoughts known sometime tomorrow, if you haven't already. That's it for me.
Thank you. Dr. Weaver?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Loomis, again, congratulations. Look forward to you being very successful at John Glenn High School. And as our superintendent's already mentioned, tomorrow's a very important day, not only for our country, but for our school district. If you were to vote yes, that's how I have to say that without, if you were to vote yes to our listening audience, it would mean about $4 million a year to our district. And someone, correct me if I'm wrong, is that $96 per household per year?
In terms of cost?
In terms of cost.
About $8 per month for every $100,000 in value.
All right. So, very little money to us personally, but it would really help our district. And so, those that are listening tonight, get to the polls and help support. God bless.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Well, I'm thinking I'll reiterate the things I said earlier.
Well, I'm thinking I'll reiterate the things that are said here, but I certainly concur with Dr. Weaver's comments on the upcoming vote tomorrow on the millage countywide and the curriculum issues that Ms. Hines, trustee Hines, highlighted. I, you know, we hardly go by any time without, we have staff in this district that have done some really, really good things. I'm looking forward to tomorrow and the election, and I wish the candidates well, including my colleague here, Mr. Buckaloo, and I hope things will be a big turnout for tomorrow from the people in our community, because I think that we need everybody to go to polls and express their opinion. The beauty of democracy is you have the right to vote and change things for the better. And that's all I have for that.
Thank you. Ms. Medel?
Thank you. First of all, I would like to welcome and thank our group from First United Methodist Church in Wayne for coming and visiting and spending their evening with us. So, any questions afterwards, just let us know about the process. My serious thoughts go out to Kate Carter's family. His funeral was on Saturday, and it hurts my heart every time we lose a student, and this one was particularly tragic. I am so impressed with our Wayne Westland family and our community and how they came together and helped support this family in their time of grief and sorrow, that they were able to raise the amount of money that was needed to pay for this young man's funeral. It's a sad time for us, but with hope, we will all get through this, and we will be a stronger community because of it. Veterans Day is coming up on Friday, and I want to remind everybody that we have two celebrations going on at 11:00, one at each one of the high schools, and as always, we always encourage our local veterans to come and join at those ceremonies. I unfortunately will not be able to be in attendance, and this is the first one I'm going to miss, because I will be at the MASB, which is Michigan Association of School Boards Conference, and this year, it's being held in Detroit. So, I know several of my other fellow trustees here will also be in attendance, and it's kind of hard to be in two places at one time. I've tried it, it just doesn't quite work. I'd like to congratulate all of our new hires, and I see there's quite a list of them, so we've been filling our positions rather well. I did get a chance to talk to somebody who's been on one of the interview teams, and they said that they have also been very cautious as to who we hire, and that we're not just taking anybody, that we want to make sure that we've got the right person in the right seat on the bus. For that, I can congratulate our human resources team. I was able to attend the play at John Glenn this Friday night, and the students did an excellent job, but it also gives me a chance to remind everybody that Wayne High's play is coming up, and they will be doing Pollyanna. So, mark your calendars, because it's coming up next week, if I remember correctly, and it's always good family entertainment. On a personal note, I had a chance this weekend, my nephew got married on Saturday, and I know that's not of any interest to anybody outside of the family, but when I showed up to the reception, I started running into people from the school district that I knew. And as my husband says, "We can't go anywhere without you running into people that you know." Most people think I'm married to Mr. Buckaloo, because the two of us usually show up to everything together. So, when I show up with Mr. Medel, unless they work for the school district, they think I'm stepping out. One of our own family here, one of our directors in special ed, got married on Saturday, Diane Tilly, so I want to congratulate her. But it was funny to walk into a room full of people that I already recognized, and I knew none of them were at the wedding that I attended. So, congratulations to Diane on her marriage. So, thank you, Mrs. Walker.
Thank you, Mrs. Medel. As usual, by the time it gets to me, everything has been said and done, but all I want to say is that tomorrow, with the hustle and bustle of the election, we've been having some pretty nice weather. Just be mindful of our children at our home and our out playing when we're out, and even past tomorrow, when you see those school buses stopped or, and the lights are flashing, please adhere to the law and be mindful of our kids when you're riding down the street and you know it's a heavily populated area with the children. Just be mindful of your surroundings, because our kids are playing and are just in the moment, and they're not always paying attention, so we have to pay attention for them. And so, with that being said, I just want to say, thank you for attending tonight. Thank you, ladies, for coming out. I hope that we were able to show you or teach you what you were looking for. You're always welcome to come and see us and be a part of the process. Everyone, have a good evening. Everyone, do take care and do your responsibilities tomorrow, and at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Move by Mr. Griffin, supported by Dr. Weaver. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries.